The Brookings County Commission meeting Tuesday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Order with a pledge of allegiance. Item number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anybody present? Seeing none. Item number four, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Have a motion of second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I do have a comment. Sorry. I'm trying to multitask over here. I need to add on to the exec session one twenty-five, two, three, and four, consulting with legal counsel and contract negotiations.
With those additions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried. Item five, consent agenda items. Approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, approval of the human services report. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments?
Our new position is further down, right? It wasn't on this. Okay. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Routine business. Approval of the claims. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports. County Development Department.
Good morning. What I included in your packet is, we, we had Banner's associates sit down and tell us everything that they've done for us in the past and gave us a general ideal of where we can go at in the future. Later on in the agenda, I'll be back up to look for additional funding. But the big thing is, we, we accomplished that feasibility memo, which has guided us so far. We have met with Brookings, with, of course, our Brookings County staff, to include legal staff, Madera Township, East Dakota Water Development District. And where Banner's really assisted us was working with the South Dakota Department of Agricultural and Natural Resources, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and the National Natural Resource Conservation Service. We've had a couple of meetings with both of those. And of course, we just recently had a meeting with the Brookings, with a couple of Brookings County Commissioners and other county staff, and then Madera Township came back in. The proposed next steps is going to be, we're to the point now where we need to figure out what the landowners truly want. We, we know what the group that's contacted us want. Now, it's time that we go and have discussions with each individual landowner that, whose land is involved, and make sure we got the consensus on the whole, whole group. Because if you don't have the consensus of the whole group, one, of course, one bad apple can spoil the whole bushel of apples. So, we, and, and this needs to be in a non-pressure situation. We just need to, need to ask, ask the question to them. And then, after that, after those landowner meetings, we plan on having another meeting with the Natural Conservation Resource Service. And then, we'll probably end up having to have a public meeting with the complete county commission acting as the drainage board, and just see where we want to go from there. So, that's, I guess it's in progress. We, we, not quite, well, I don't think we're quite to the middle point yet, but we're to the point, after we have our landowners discussion, then we will, we will be at that tipping point, one way. Either we commit fully, or we back off and say we did the best we could and move on. So, yesterday, we had a tabletop exercise with the city of Brookings. They invited me over. We did a six-mile creek scenario. We worked at the National Weather Service and got some data on high water levels and things like that. It was actually a pretty good, good concept. All the department heads, we, we got the interest in the department heads wanting to, wanting to learn a little bit more. So, in March, we're gonna, gonna go back and do her again. This time, we'll go through the proper procedures with our Office of Emergency Management and Pierre, and we'll predict them to have a blizzard tabletop exercise, and hope we don't have an actual blizzard while the exercise is going on. But, we used to, I, I'm notorious for when I plan an exercise, every now and then, what I plan for happens in the near future. So, we gotta be careful. Maybe I'll push it back to April when we know we won't have a blizzard. But other than that, we do have our local emergency planning committee meeting this Thursday. And just to put on your calendar, in, in December, we do plan on having a pandemic planning coordinating committee, where we're going to do an after-action on the whole year's events of all the pods and things like that. And that should be a, that should be a good meeting. If, if you want to attend any of our planned pandemic planning coordinating committee meetings, that probably would be the one to attend, just to, just to hear everyone talk about what happened, the good, the bad, the ugly. And, and of course, now with the, with the COVID nineteen spiking in places like Minnesota and Nebraska and Iowa, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out, it may come back here. And, and if you look at our numbers, our numbers are not trending down. So, it's not over by any means. Rather than that, we'll have another pandemic planning coordinating committee, vaccination clinic or not, in the next year. We don't know yet. Right now, the CDC has not recommended everyone to get the booster shots, although there are several states going ahead and doing it on their own. And a small city called New York is also doing it on their own. So, that could conceivably happen in the springtime. I don't have the amounts that this last pod cost us. We're still waiting to get information from the Swiftell Center. And that's all I got for now. We've got a couple of plats coming up, and then we'll talk about the banners, financial thing later in the meeting. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Do you have the date yet for the after-action meeting for the pandemic committee?
One second. I have got December ninth.
And is that over the noon hour?
Yes, ma'am.
And you know where it's going to be?
Twelve noon. We'll send emails out, and we'll include all the commissioners on this particular one. Your need to RSVP, we've got a PPCC member going to buy meals, or buy food for us. So, we'll have to have an RSVP if you plan on eating. If you don't plan on, or if you show up and you don't RSVP, you might, might be upset watching me eat a sandwich, and you don't get one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Angie, you have a question?
Same question.
Same question. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Weed and pest department.
Good morning. I hand it out while in your packets, you should have the vehicle replacement schedule as of two thousand and twenty-one. This is every vehicle we have in the weed department. I also included the miles, the mileage on them. I just want to point out, the nineteen ninety-seven International Truck and the spray system, the mileage on that is pretty low, but it's brought to my attention that that truck was used just for, to haul salt or gravel. It wasn't used out plowing, so. So, I just wanted to bring that. That's the lowest mileage. Otherwise, I have it just a schedule. As of right now, this is kind of what it would look like if we were going to replace truck and spray system, per budget, funds, all that kind of stuff. I'd like to do the spray systems with the truck. That way, we, we've got it. And then, say, once we replace the two thousand Sterling Truck and Spray System and a sprayer, that'll go seven to ten years for that spray system. I have been talking with CNR down in Sioux Falls for that reason. But otherwise, this is kind of what it looks like. Every, once a year, and if it doesn't work once a year, we can adjust. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. Is there any questions on what I have set up?
With the spray system you purchased from CNR, would they install then on the?
They will install.
Okay.
We just have to bring the vehicle down to them.
Do we have another kind of supplemental piece to this misty where we get a chance to see what criteria pushes, pushes a vehicle towards the top in terms of its condition? So, it's good, like new, used, there's a lot of wear and tear, there's damage from, I don't know, salt exposure, something like that?
I don't have that on here, but just an explanation. I think I understand, obviously, what you're asking. The trucks we get now are from the highway department. They're, they hauled gravel, they plowed snow, salt sand, very rusty trucks, very, they work. We're only on the road for six months a year. There's, with the trucks we have now, I guess we're doing a lot of repairs. I have one truck sitting there right now with either a thermostat, or something else out. It's, it's waiting to get fixed, which is not a big deal. The reason I'm saying replace all these, once we replace them with something newer, we won't have to replace so frequently, because we are on the road only six months a year. Did I answer your question, Mrs. Borsma?
Yes and no. I think part of what I'm thinking about is just understanding, our highest priority trucks and pickups are in the worst condition, have the highest mileage by some metric that we're actually regularly evaluating systems on. Not opposed to the idea of replacing that chunk of the fleet. I think, I want to know that the ones that we're replacing soonest are the ones in most dire need. Yep.
I can get that information to you at the next mission meeting?
If there's maintenance issues, if you got a transmission or something that's been giving problems, you know?
I feel like if there's a, even off to the right, if there's a notes column that indicates, this is, you know, on a scale of one to five, this is in terrible condition. It's a one versus a five, or something like that, so that we get an, an idea of why this one ranks highest on the replacement schedule.
Okay.
And another thing that might help is also how many miles per year you're putting on each vehicle.
That is something I can look at putting on also. Any other questions on this? Okay. I just have one more thing I want to get out there. I've had a few calls already about gopher, gopher feet. You have to take your gophers that you trapped in the township to the township clerk. The township clerk will then pay the individual for the gophers. But the gopher program ended November twelfth. So, the township should be sending in their amounts to me, so we can get them paid back their dollar fifty portion. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Brian?
Very small report today, I guess. Biggest thing that I have to report on is we received this application from ITC here on the thirtieth of November, or September. But currently, our existing application is under review by the state's attorney's office. I know we can't act on it today, but I just wanted to put this guys in, this in front of you. ITC would prefer to get this cable install done, so it does not impede with the overpass project next year.
I don't have any issues with what was sent to me. So, if you want to move forward on it, that's fine.
Okay. So, I, I guess I'm just looking maybe for consensus from you guys, or if we need to wait till December, if I can give them the verbal, or, or what's your guys' feelings?
I don't want this to slow down the I twenty-nine interchange project at this point in time, Twos Street. Verbal's fine with me to get this going, and we'll put it on our agenda for formal approval. As far as I'm concerned, that works.
Consensus, go ahead. And then just have it on the next agenda then?
Yep. I will have it on the next meeting on the seventh.
And I just want to say, I understand this was a special circumstance, and I agree with Commissioner Bartley that we don't want to slow down the I twenty-nine interchange project because of this. But we really don't, we want to follow the state statute on approving these, these easements, and we need to have an action item on our agenda when we approve them.
Brian, do we have an idea of when they're anticipating trying to start work on this?
Their intention was, when they submitted this, they were hoping to get it done in a very short period of time. It sounds like the days, or, or the working days is probably only going to take a day or two. So, I mean, I would assume within the next week, it'll be completed. A lot of it's boring if you, if you look at the second page. Thank you.
Any questions for Brian? Marty?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just, just to give you a brief detention center report, we have thirty-one inmates. By square footage, I, that's whatever I should be at thirty-one. So, I, I say I'm at full capacity right now. So, anxious for the new jail to open up, but we're still working on policies and stuff, so it, we'll be fine. Got seventy on, seventy participants on the twenty-four-seven program. And, so, we're still plenty busy with drug court UNAs and, and twenty-four-seven UNAs. Last week, I went and talked to the federal retired employees. They, they called me and wanted a presentation. Tomorrow, I'm going to Elkton. There's been some recent fraud scams that hit some, some of the elderly in Elkton the last few weeks. And so, I'm gonna go over there and do a fraud scam talk, presentation, try to hopefully prevent some of, some of this fraud and theft, because that's just, that's just a continuing thing. Right now, I'd like to commend my staff. I'm sure to help. And we got lots of overtime. And, but my, my deputies have stepped up to the plate. I'm trying to get them their days off, but they're on twelve-hour shifts. I tried to supplement some of the twelve-hour shifts with, with federal overtime, but it's, and I, and, but we're staying, we, we got our head above water. But I am afraid of a little bit of burnout. But so far, I make contact probably with, with every deputy every day to ask them how they're doing. And, and, but I'm trying to get them their days off. And just so forth, you're going to see the, there's lots of overtime, but I have nothing else. There's nothing else I can do. When I don't have the help, I gotta go to overtime. And then yesterday, my, my administrative assistant gave me her resignation. And so, I won't talk anymore about that for now, but I'm not happy about that, and how that was handled. Any questions?
Thank you. Finance officer report, be it noted items, auditors count with the treasurer, payroll and additive totals, have expenditure report collected. Any questions there? Give anything to add, Stacy? Okay. Move on to item seven, scheduled agenda items. We have none. Regular business. Item A, action approved resolution number twenty-one dash forty-nine, a plat of lots one, two, and three of Freiberg addition in the east half of section twenty-nine, township one-ten north, range forty-eight west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Comments?
Yes, sir. This was heard at the regularly scheduled November planning and zoning meeting, and approved unanimously with, and sent to this board with the recommendation that you approve it also.
Any questions? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item B, action approved resolution number twenty-one dash fifty, a resolution to rescind the burn ban enacted on June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Comments?
And I understand this came from the firefighters. Is that right?
Yeah. Marty, Marty had said that he had visited with the firefighters association, and they are, they approve rescinding this at this time, too.
In fact, they, they called me two weeks ago, on commission day, and that Jacobson, Dave Jacobson, I think he's the president of the rural, and said that they, they'd like the burn ban to come off.
And, and the only reason I ask that, because I know we always follow what the firefighters say. Last night and this morning, we're kind of surrounded by places that have those red flag warnings in place because of the high winds. And we're not concerned about that. Is that?
Well, they haven't contacted me. So, I guess, it's your guys' decision. I'm just basing off what they told me two weeks ago, so.
I've had similar requests from, I've tended to Bruce Fireman's feet up there, and a couple of the chiefs. They wanted to leave it in place until the crops were out, and most of the crops are out now. And they wanted to lift it then.
I just have a concern about the wind and the fact that there are so many places in South Dakota and Nebraska right now that have the red flag warnings because of this wind situation that we're going through. And I just wonder if we might do better to make it effective like five days from now when we're past this. But if y'all just want to follow the recommendation?
I think most people, if they have a burn, they still call into dispatch. Am I correct on that, Marty? With the burn ban, they have to have a fire chief go out and inspect. So, I know experience myself, when you call into dispatch to do a control burn, those, they're watching the wind, and they usually put, give their input, too. So, I guess. I'd have no problem lifting it myself. We call the roll, please.
Pierce?
No.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash one twenty-nine, a letter of contract between Brookings County and Banner Associates Incorporated for Engineering and Environmental Services, Madera Township for Big Sioux River Diversion Channel Dyke Reestablishment. Amendment two. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion of second. Comments?
Yes, sir. This, um, this, the first amendment allowed us to get up to where we are right now. And what they're proposing to do is to create a list of landowners for the easement area. And that way, because our, our big issue with the landowner information and the contacting with them is, we cannot legally get their wetland amounts and how many acres they've got in it without the landowner's permission. So, they're in this phase as they contact the landowners, then they'll get all the information on exactly how many acres they've got under easement, and dollar amounts and stuff like that to allow us to, to figure out the future. And then they're proposing another meeting with the Brookings County Madera Township, and, and coordination with the East Dakota Water Development District, who we hope will partner with us in the future. If, if this all goes well, we're hoping we can get some, some coordination with the East Dakota Water Development District to help us finance some of this. But that's, we won't know until we ask the hard question. And then they're proposing another NRCS meeting with Brookings County and Madera Township. And, um, they, of course, my officers have to work with them. They attached a, a schedule on the back on what their costs are per hour. And, you know, at my level, I recommend that we approve it, so we can keep, keep the process moving on. This is not a budgeted item in my drainage budget, and I would like the commission to understand you will have to supplement that particular budget line at the end of the year.
Any questions or comments?
So, Bob, this is a little bit different than what I thought when we came out of the meeting. And I just want to make sure that I understand what the progress would be then. All this seventy-five hundred dollars does is those three things that are listed. They're going to make the list, but they're not going to contact any people. Is that correct?
No, it does sound like contacting the people is, is part of it. If they don't contact the people, then they can't get the actual information that they need with the number of acres.
And, and that's what I wanted to understand. So, they'll be asking people, they'll contact them and ask them if they're in favor of the project, so we have an idea on, on people's thoughts. Is that included in here?
That's the way I understand it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because that's not necessarily what Okay, because that's not necessarily what it said, so, okay.
Any other questions?
Now, on the other hand, yeah, I see what you're saying there. They're gonna meet with East Dakota and the list and everything. And what they may end up doing is coming back onto the county or the township but to facilitate the actual landowner contact, I guess.
Because I don't think this means that they're gonna do those reach outs and say, are you in favor of this project or opposed to it?
You're correct. I retract my earlier statement.
But I believe they were gonna contact them so they could get their actual acres in the easement.
NRCS easements. To get that, you have to have the landowner's expressive written permission. Otherwise, you don't get it. I cannot walk into the NRCS and get Commissioner Jensen's wetlands. Anything dealing with drainage, it has to come from him to me.
And I will say, I'm in favor of this motion. I just want to be sure I understand what we're paying for. The big thing right now, we have to work through this process, is that the federal rules require that it be unanimous that all the landowners agree. So what we talked about in our meeting is, once we had this list, because we did not know who was all included in the, um, what's the correct phrase I'm looking for, in the area that we're looking at. We didn't even know who all that was, and there was some consideration that maybe once we had that list, maybe people from Madera Township could be helpful in reaching out to the people they know and getting some support for joining in on the project.
There was like, it was close to thirty easements by eleven or twelve. And like Leanne said, hopefully that there might even be a chance that they can trade acres or whatever for some of these easements also, so.
And it's too early to start that talk. What we need to do is talk to those, if it's thirty, it's thirty. Hopefully, it's gonna be less than that, people and say, will you join in with us in getting the Big Sioux back in its channel? That's if everybody agrees, but if we have people that say, no, I like it the way it is, then we are probably done with this project. I'm not sure that we have any alternatives after that based on what Banner said, so.
And my next step in my office is, we have scoured the plat books. We have scoured the GIS with Mr. Sampson. Now, our next step is to take those two results to the Office of Equalization downstairs, work with Jacob and his crew to get the final list, and then that's the list that we'll give back to. So it's a team project. Banner is the lead, but the county is by all means still assisting them.
Any other questions? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Item D, action to approve agreement number twenty-one dash one-thirty. An agreement between Brookings County and BKV Group Incorporated, additional service memo two. Do I have motion to approve?
Move approval.
Have motion and second. Comments?
I just want to be sure I understood this correctly when we talked about this before. This is not the big classroom that's turning into an employee area. It's the smaller area, right?
So this isn't, this is the part that's not in the new construction. It's part of the remodeled sheriff's office. So the smaller conference room.
Thank you.
Further questions, roll call, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action approve PCO, PCO number zero-five-eight for the Detention Center Expansion Project in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars for UPS load testing. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
So questions and solutions engineering doing our commissioning. This UPS load test was part of their contract. However, it wasn't part of Engelstadt's, or as the electrical sub on the project. It wasn't part of their contract. You may see some additional paperwork on this as like change order nine coming through, but this is important to get done now because they want to get this test done as soon as possible. So that's why you're seeing this sort of as a standalone change order for the project.
It says we're not deducting this from contingency on the Henry Carlson. I don't know what that means. If you're just gonna resolve it in there, they, it says deduct from contingency.
So yeah, so then they plan on taking it out of contingency, then?
It looks like they don't plan to take it out of contingency.
They don't plan on taking it out of contingency, so it's a change order. So it's additional dollars.
Have we talked to them about whether or not there's any particular reason it couldn't be covered by contingency? It seems like an omission from the original contract scoping, which would typically fall under a contingency, not a change order. Because if the, generally speaking, your construction manager at risk is responsible from contingency to cover unforeseen conditions and/or any omissions related to contracts not lining up in terms of scoping. So it seems like it should be contingency eligible.
I can certainly talk to Chad about that. If, you know, say, is this something that would be eligible for contingency, I can ask.
In either case, I guess I don't have an opposition to the amount or the need to do it. It's just I would prefer to see that come out of contingency.
Any other questions?
Do we want to make an amendment to the document that basically says our recommendation is deduct from contingency? So that they know that we approved that as a group?
The only thing is, would that hold it up that they would have to, you said further documentation's coming from the change order?
There's a larger overall change order with a number of things like we've been seeing. This is just, is separate from that. So no, I don't think there's anything else coming specific to this, this change.
The dollar amount, so the way that change orders typically work is you group proposed change order, PCO number fifty-eight. You might group ten of those into a single dollar change order. This one's outside of that because they need it approved sooner.
Right.
What, where's that line, where it goes to?
Typically, if it's added scope, it's change order. If it's unforeseen conditions and/or an omission in the contractors in your construction manager at risk's scoping documents, that would typically be contingency. It should be contingency, in my opinion.
So would it be appropriate then to just go ahead and make an amendment that this be a deduct from contingency? So that they know that's our preference? Rather than just hoping it's okay and changes, I don't know that it's a real problem with anybody to change it. It's just proper column.
I'm thinking this was originally gonna be done by another company, and Engelstadt is gonna do it now.
No.
No?
No, because your commissioning group was going to do their part of it, but they need the collaboration of the electrician of record to actually do the work.
Right.
And so it was in the commissioning agency's scope, but they failed to put it in the scope for the electrician. So it's a mismatch of scope.
If we do, Commissioner Bartley says, does that slow this down for a week or two? Or do we need, you know, do we need a discussion on that? I'd hate to slow it down for four thousand bucks, but it seems like it should come out of contingency. Not the other one, and I don't know how that would work, that we say, we're fine with the work, but we disagree on where it should come out. That way it can go, and we can have that discussion. Or I don't know how, or that discussion needs to happen, if it's at a meeting or if it's at a, you know, our next commission meeting. I don't know.
Whether we do a friendly amendment to the original motion to approve the amount, but contest whether it's a change order or contingency, I think is fine.
How about if I make a motion to amend that we pay the amount requested from contingency? And then if Henry Carlson disagrees that it's a contingency item, they can come back and discuss that with us.
I would second that amendment.
Have motion and second.
Vote on the amendment?
This is an amendment, see, vote on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment?
Original.
The amendment first.
The amendment first.
But that's what I mean.
Original as amended.
Correct. On Commissioner Pierce's amendment to the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Amendment passed. I'll back to original motion. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Stacy, is it possible at a future meeting, I don't have any idea what we've spent, if anything, out of contingency and what we spend on change orders, could you give us those two numbers at some point?
Yeah, that was on my financials that I provided to you last week at the meeting. I think I had change orders and contingency were on there, I believe, but yeah, I can do that.
Item F, action approve adding Wi-Fi capabilities to courtrooms A and B at the courthouse. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Comments?
Just that we've had a request from the court that we put Wi-Fi into those two courtrooms so that they're able to do document sharing during trials.
Dan, do you have any input here?
No, I support it.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action approve volunteer firefighter and honor guard policy for Brookings County. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Comments?
Just one comment. I think that this policy has some wiggle room in different areas that might be difficult for some of the department heads, but I think they're capable of working through those. So at this point, we'll support it.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item H, action approve a payment to the Brookings County four-H livestock judging team to travel to the National Four-H Livestock Judging Competition. Do I have motion to approve?
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
We need an amount. We need an amount.
Yeah.
So last year, you did this as well and gave five hundred dollars. I think I had that on the, did I not have that on there? I think I put that maybe in my notes is where I had that, because I wasn't sure if that was the amount that you wished to give. If you recall, the one gal from that team was in at one of our last meetings and gave us an update on that, so.
I think they asked for between three and five hundred, if I remember right. And is the amount that the motion was for, was for five hundred?
For five hundred.
Okay, we have a motion for five hundred dollars for travel for the four-H livestock judging team. Call the roll, please.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I, action approve request to fill vacancy for maintenance supervisor in the commission department.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
Stacy, in the packet, there wasn't a job description.
There wasn't?
Not that I was able to find, but I might have messed up, but I didn't see it. Did everybody else see a job description?
I thought I had put it in there. I have one. I must have not gotten it in the packet. I apologize.
I'd like to see the job description before we start advertising the position. No.
Is... I don't want to wait till December seventh to start advertising the position.
Would it be possible during recess to get copies of that and we could act on it after executive session if necessary?
Yes, I could do that, because I know I have it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We need a...
Motion table until after executive session?
Second.
Have motion and second, table until after his executive session, item J. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. It's table until after executive. Commission Department Director's report.
No, we have another.
Item J.
That was item I.
Oh, sorry. Item J, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for human services assistant in the state's attorney department. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. Any comments?
Posted.
This is to advertise the position.
And are we doing internal advertising first and then, is that what you're proposing, Dan?
Yes.
So we have action approve request to fill vacancy for human services assistant in the state's. And it would be posted internally?
Usually we do a week or two weeks.
What do we normally do, Stacy?
Internally is usually a week.
A week.
Externally is usually two weeks.
How many?
A week if it's internal, two weeks if it's external.
And what we're approving now is the one week internal and the two week external. If we don't have applicants, that's normally what we do, right?
Any other comments?
I think that's basically qualified applicants internally.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, commission department director's report.
Give me just a second to get all of my stuff. Do want to just note that we did have, and Hubert emailed out a report this morning to everyone. If you didn't get that, I think I printed that off and set it on everyone's desk. So there was his report, surplus cash analysis at forty-one percent. That's slightly below our ten-year average of forty-six percent, but still, still okay there. I think I was supposed to hand those out, and I didn't do that. I'll get those handed out. Too much on my plate today. The Safety and Risk Conference that Kristen and I attended a couple of weeks ago had very good sessions. I think I gave a report on that in my report. At the last meeting, we had the railroad, the rail line request, or some information from Dan Belka. I was asked to reach out to him to see kind of what that ask really was. He basically said twofold, to let the commission know about this project, and then if you so desire to write a letter of support or draft a resolution of support for that project. So I don't know what interest there is for that.
I guess what's the commission's feelings?
I have no objection to us doing a letter in support. It'd be wonderful if that would ever happen, but the chances of it are so infinitesimal.
I guess I fail to see how that impacts Brookings County because I don't know... I guess I fail to see how that impacts Brookings County because I don't know that we're part of the proposal for the service area.
I would agree we're not part of the area, but at the same time, no responses. Appropriate. Not that we're not in support or support, we're just no response.
So Mike, you suggest a letter of support, Dan, or?
No.
No?
No response at all is what I'd suggest.
Okay. I did include Renault Dry, who had placed the mechanisms in the courthouse to help dry that out. They they had a written report, a one-year review that was attached to my report. Interstakes, Inner Lakes Community Action ICAP sent out a letter announcing that they've hired their new chief executive director, Eric Kunsweiler. Been with that organization for about 20 years and so he takes over January 7th. I did also include in my report a draft of the 2022 calendar. I'd like to ask for maybe look at a couple of potential changes. The first one would be in February. So if you see on the 15th, we have a commission meeting scheduled or if it would fall in line with our first and third Tuesdays. However, that falls right kind of in the midst of ledge, the ledge, Naco ledge conference out in DC. And I would assume that we have at least one commissioner, if not maybe a couple commissioners planning to attend that. So what I would suggest is we back push that meeting, the 15th to February 22nd. And then if you see in March, we actually have five Tuesdays, so we could do the 8th and the 22nd of March so that we're kind of doing every other instead of having two Tuesdays back to back. Thoughts on that? Does that sound like a reasonable change? We then instead we'd have the two-week break in February. So we'd meet on the 1st and the 22nd of February and the 8th and the 22nd of March.
I like it.
Like it? Okay. And then if you go to May, there is the WEAR conference is the 18th, 19th, 20th of May. And we meet on the 17th. And if I know I've had some interest from commissioners to attend that, that is, I believe, up in Alaska in May. Assuming the 17th would definitely be a travel day. So wondering if we could just push that that meeting in May to the 24th. Instead of the 17th, then, you know, because there are again five Tuesdays in May, it kind of works, kind of works itself out. Are you okay with that? That change as well? Okay. Otherwise, I had everything else verified with finance office as far as claims and payroll due dates. So I think I'll make those other changes and then I'll get the final draft out. Is there anything else? Anybody had any questions on that? On that calendar? Okay. And then. Note. Just upcoming dates. Next week, the offices are closed Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Just to have on your calendars as we move into December, the egg banquet on December 7th and the commission, we do have a table for that event. Wednesday, December 8th is the virtual chamber pre-lunch, pre-ledge luncheon. And then we have the 24th and the 31st are those holidays with Christmas and New Year's. Looking out even further, January 19th, to get it on your calendars now, is Brookings Day at the Capitol. And I did have information, someone told me on Monday, December 13th, East Brookings Business and Industry is having a meeting at Daktronics. I believe I haven't got seen anything official, but I think that's probably a 5 o'clock start out there. Usually typically is a 5 o'clock start for that. But if anybody has. Has any gets any information, if you want to share that with me, I would appreciate that. I can officially get those dates. I haven't seen anything and maybe I'll it's still coming. It's still a ways out yet, but.
I can grab it when I run home for lunch.
I had an invitation to give an update at the meeting. I'm not 100% sure I can be there yet, but I'm sure somebody can give an update at the meeting.
And I do have my surplus cash analysis that ended up in my wrong folder and it didn't get handed out. So I'll hand those out too after this. Otherwise, that's all I have unless you have some questions for me.
Any questions? State's Attorney's Office report. Commissioner reports and discussion items. Commissioner Pierce?
On November 2nd, in the afternoon, we did department head evaluations as a group. Also on November 2nd, I attended the joint jurisdiction ordinance meeting as a member of the city planning and zoning commission. And we're working through making progress on that. On November 4th, I had a public affairs meeting and as Stacy gave you those dates, I hope everybody's planning on attending. It'd be great. December 8th is the virtual chamber pre-legislation. Meeting. And then. The Brookings Day at the Capitol will be January 19th, in which based on the late date the legislature starts, that'll be the second week of the session this year. So hopefully some of you or all of you are hoping to attend that. I attended the Midary Township Drainage Meeting on the 5th and we've had a lot of conversation about what happened at that. Then we had our planning retreat on the 9th and I attended the Tin County Meeting on the 10th. That would be all that I'd have to report.
Commissioner Bartley?
November 2nd also participated in the department head reviews. That was an interesting meeting and I think we got some great department heads. Also went through on the joint meeting jurisdictional planning session with the city that evening. Set up some parameters of how we're going to continue to move ahead and try and get this finished. November 4th, a detention center meeting. Project is going well. At this point, it's still on schedule and we hope to be able to move some inmates first party December here. November 9th, our planning session with our group, our retreat. I think it was a good meeting. We managed to use all the time allocated for it, so we did well there. On the 4-H banquet on the 10th and also on the 9th and also on the 10th, the Tin County Meeting, which was well attended. And on the 12th, I attended the Veterans Day Ceremony out at the Swiftele Center. It was really well done. High school band played at the beginning and at the end it did an exceptional job and I thank them for participating in that ceremony. It was very well attended. That'd be my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Krogman?
Yeah, November 2nd, our department head reviews. On the 5th, I had a Zoom meeting with our housing study management team. We will be meeting after after our commission meeting for our first technical committee, which now includes. Additional group from surrounding area that have that have decided to be in that bigger group that will help kind of initiate the study. So again, I'm part of the management team, but also be part of this housing tactical team along with some other people. So that's going to happen at noon today. So we'll get that started. That'll be our first meeting and then we'll have some continued housing study management team meetings as needed. So we're going to start getting gathering info on that and hopefully be a smooth process and we can get some good information on our housing study for Brookings County and the city of Brookings and also the smaller communities around. November 9th, I was at the commission planning retreat. And November 10th, I was at the Research Park groundbreaking. The Poet Bio Products Institute was was done, very well attended. It was raining, so we had the groundbreaking inside on tile floors, but hey, I thought that counts, you know? And so, no, it was very well attended, well put on. We had, it's a great collaboration between SDSU, School of Mines and the state of South Dakota on a new building out there and it's, there's a lot, a lot of excitement for that. So it's good to see a new building going up out there in the research park and I think that's going to lead to more, to some more buildings, some more investment into the park. So. Hopefully this is just a stepping stool for a lot more research being done in the research park and a lot more investment into the park as far as buildings and structures and stuff too. So. Lot of excitement in the room that day. So that was a good event. That's all I have.
Commissioner Boersma?
First part of my report's the same as everybody else's. The second was department head reviews, the ninth commission planning retreat, the 10th Tin County Meeting. On the Saturday, the 13th, I attended the Chambers USD SDSU Tailgate of Two Cities event, which was really well attended, but a heartbreaker of a game. Ugh, just crushing. But in in general, it was a great event, really well attended and they had us in theory lined up for Representative Tiedemann. Mayor Niemeyer and I to do South Dakota trivia against some USD dignitaries. But they decided that everybody was having too much fun, enjoying food and beverage and that trivia was not going to go anywhere. So we'll save that for next time, apparently. Great event, though. And then last night, we had a Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Board meeting. Some potentially startling statistics coming out of that meeting last night was that specifically related to the number of crisis service calls that Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness has been asked to respond to in the last several months. On average, they're typically seeing or used to see probably six months ago, somewhere between 13 and 17 calls for service on their crisis on-call line. The last several months in a row, it's between 50 and 60 calls for service and November, they had 30 in the first 14 days of the month. So between three and four times the level of crisis calls for Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness to respond to in conjunction with law enforcement. So in addition to that, the typical wait time around Brookings County for private practice and Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness has always been a little bit different. So private practice, new intakes might take between two and three months to get an appointment. Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness historically has been between five and 10 days. They are even up to seven weeks at this point and the rest of private practice is at nearly three months in order to do new patient intakes. So our mental health professionals are stretched incredibly thin. Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness is author, has been authorized by their board to hire three more staff members to try and cut that new intake time down as best as they possibly can. Probably all saw the front page of the register, things going on with Brookings High School certainly. And so that's something that we, I think we need to be very proactive about because the longer it takes for people to get new intake services, the more crisis calls we start to see and we don't want to be in that situation. We don't want to put our law enforcement folks in that situation. We don't want to put our mental health professionals in that situation or individuals and families in those situations. So. That's kind of what we're what we're up to with Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness. And that would be my report.
Dana, is your office or Marty, is your office, are you seeing an uptick then in the mental health?
Not a noticeable uptick.
Because I hadn't seen that in any of the numbers that we're getting. Are you noticing that?
I think a lot of them are being dealt with.
Diffused.
In the field, kind of like what we talked about at that public affairs meeting. You know, some of it has resulted in not having to go as far as to the involuntary committal process, but being dealt with it more at a local level.
And I guess I just have a question because our staff member who's retiring played, has played such a big role in the mental health commitments in Brookings County forever. Is somebody getting trained already to take his place and do we have something in mind for that?
Yes, I do, but I can't comment on that because.
Right. Okay.
I have to open up jobs and.
Exactly.
I have to do it the right way.
Yep, I understand that. I just want to be sure that we've got a backup plan. That's what if you get run over by a bus?
I have a back, yes, I do have a backup plan. And as far as commitments to Yankton, I don't know if we're. But far as welfare checks, we're way up. I think yesterday the city police had five during the day and we continue, but all welfare checks doesn't become emergency committals, but. And what's helping is our laptops that when when the deputy goes and assess the situation and. If it's warranted to do our laptop and we get a hold of a counselor in in Sioux Falls, so far we've been able to keep that person in the home with a safety plan and stuff. So. It's not all about sending them to Yankton. It's the welfare checks that we go daily to respond to, to make sure that individual is okay, that doesn't need the next, the next level. That's where we're getting the increases of welfare checks. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yep.
On the second, did department. On the 8th, we had a Midary Drainage Meeting, good meeting. We found a lot of information there. We'll keep continuing to move forward. We had our planning retreat on the 9th. That was a great meeting. We got a lot done that day. That evening, I went to 4-H awards event. And then on the 10th, we had our 10-county Su Valley Commissioners Meeting. And that's all I had. Moving on to the item number 12, executive. Codified Law 1-25-2, parentheses 1, 2, 3, and 4. I have a motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
Have motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are now in executive session.